Okay, it's nine o'clock. The meeting is called to order. We're meeting in the Central Jury Room, the Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl. Would you all please stand for the invocation? Let us pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, Lord, as we come to here today, may all the decisions be made under your guidance and under your will. Lord, just bless this court and bless it for your service. And the servicemen, Lord, we pray for them as they carry out the work for our country. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Do you all join me to pledge allegiance to this great nation? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me to pledge to Texas.
Honored to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all. Bob, we have any special presentations this morning? None? Very good. Does any citizen wish to make any comments about any agenda item? If they do, the sheriff has forms for you to fill out. I have one. Is there anyone else that wishes to make any comments about any agenda item? Mike, you don't have anything?
Yes, I do. I need to fill out a form.
What do you...
He's on the agenda, Judge.
If you're on the agenda, that's all right. Okay. Seeing none, the next item is a consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Roan. Is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carried. The next item is subdivision, roads and plats. Public hearing to discuss and consider approval of the following proposal for traffic regulations. Number one is to establish a stop sign and another one is 25 mile speed limit.
Good morning, Judge Cochrane, Commissioners. Ki-Kegga Road is the one that was accepted by the Commissioners' Court January 14th of this year. We just completed road improvements on the roadway and we're coming to court to establish this stop sign on Ki-Kegga. This is where it intersects with Carter Road and also if the judge didn't mind, we'll take the other one. They had a 25 mile per hour speed limit on there, which was not legal as far as when the county took it over, so I'm asking the court to establish this 25 miles per hour on Ki-Kegga Road.
Okay, does anybody have any questions, Don, on this? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve both these items.
Thank you, Judge. Public hearing.
Oh, okay. A public hearing is now open to discuss this. Does anyone wish to have any comments on this? Any citizen?
I will comment that I've had calls from several citizens out there who were very happy with the work and both the timeliness and the quality of it.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve these two things.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Roan to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Berry. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carried. If I'm a little raggy this morning, I just returned from Washington DC and I've got to get all that out of my system, so. All right. Next item is discuss and consider the approval of a resolution concerning a road easement in the Whipper Pool...
Whipper Well.
Whipper Well Bay Park and take appropriate action.
Judges, come about, the Homeware Association contacted Precinct Four Commissioner Steve Berry. They're wanting to sell this parkway, park, that they've had for, well, since the induction of the development. In that park, there's a road easement and they want confirmation from the Commissioners' Court that we don't have any use for it or lay any claim to it. So I drafted up a resolution for everyone's signature, which states, "Whereas a plat of the Whipper Well Bay Edition was approved by the Commissioners' Court on January the 6th, 1978, and recorded a Slide A 100B, plat records of Hood County, Texas, and whereas a park was included on the plat of the Whipper Well Bay Edition, approved by Commissioners' Court on January 6th, 1978, described as Whipper Way Whipper Well Bay Park, Section Y, and recorded as such on Slide A 100B, plat records of Hood County, Texas. And whereas Whipper Well Bay is owned and maintained by the Whipper Well Bay Owners Association for exclusive use by the owners within the Whipper Well Bay Edition. And whereas located within the Whipper Well Bay Park, contains a 30-foot wide road easement for access to amenities afforded to the owners of the Whipper Way Bay Edition. And whereas this 30-foot wide easement contained within Whipper Well Bay Park is also owned and maintained by the Whipper Way Whipper Well Bay Owners Association. And therefore, it be resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Hood County, that Hood County, Texas does not lay claim or have a public interest in the 30-foot road easement located with the Whipper Well Bay Park. And when thereof, resolution was passed and proved by Hood County as evidence as the signatures affixed heretofore."
It's catching, isn't it, Don?
The county has never had anything to do with that 30-foot easement, is that correct?
Up to my knowledge and what I've, my research, no, sir.
Central Texas title is asking us to abandon any easement. That's where this kind of came from, was Central Texas title, I believe.
And they know where to sell this park.
Thing I'd add to that, Don, would be maybe we should change the name as we...
It's WWB, it's easier, okay?
Judge, also I ran this resolution by the county attorney and she's, gave her blessing on it.
That was my next question. So Ms. Casper seen it, correct?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve, then?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Roan to approve. Any further discussion?
I'm not going to reread it, Doc.
No, I'm not going to reread it. Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carried. Thank you very much. Now, development and compliance, discuss and consider and take appropriate action on the final plat for Jackson Bend Mobile Home Park Lots 10-1 and 12-1, Granbury, Texas.
Judge, the property that's being platted is in an unrecorded subdivision called Jackson Bend Mobile Home Park. What it was, the owners of Lot 10 had purchased the property and sometime later decided to do a survey on it and have found that most of their improvements of their lawn and front yard was actually part of the boat ramp next to it. So they spoke with the boat owner and got that situation solved between the two of them. And now they're coming to plat their property, which creates Lot 10-1, being at eight tenths of an acre, and Lot 12-1, which is the boat ramp, being at two tenths of an acre. Staff reviewed this plat and makes a recommendation to approve.
Don, where is this?
In Jackson Bend, I'm sorry, in some Precinct 3.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve this final plat. Motion made by Commissioner Tout, have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carried.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Budget and finance. Consider budget line item amendments for the period of May the 20th through June the 2nd and take appropriate action.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. There are two budget amendment requests for your consideration. The first is from the county attorney. She's requesting to move $1,262.34 into supplies to pay for extra fuel that will be needed for the balance of this year. And then for the justices of the peace, their funds for autopsies have been depleted. That was a substantial amount that was authorized at the beginning of the year, but it appears that for the balance of the year, they will need an additional $35,000 to pay for autopsies and final expenses of those people who pass away in the county. Their requesting that comes from the general contingency line, 010-409-049700.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Stan about these budget line item amendments?
Rick, we'll have to readjust our budget for next year for autopsies.
That would be wise. I think that's a question you'd have to address to the justices of the peace, Commissioner.
Is there any, there any possibility of having that service someday being offered to Hood County?
I really don't know, unless you, unless you establish an office here, such as they have in Tarrant County, the Office of the Medical Examiner.
Because isn't a lot of this charged also for transport to and from?
Some of it is, and some of it also is in 010640 for burial expenses.
Well, I don't know that that part would change, but the transport part certainly would if we had that capability here in Hood County. Don't understand with our size compared to other counties why we don't have that service.
I don't know.
Might be something that I could look into.
All right, does any other commissioner have any other questions for Stan on his budget line item amendments? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Roan to have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carried. Consider payment of bills for a period of May the 20th through June the 2nd.
Judge and Commissioners, the total of these bills come to $930,044.61. Some of the larger items are comprised of a payment of $12,959.78 to Ben E. Keith Company for Jail Groceries, and then to the City of Granbury for public utilities, $36,407.6. There's a transfer, just an internal transfer into Fund 112, which is where we pay for the indigent defense attorney fees, $69,130.60. There's a payment, which is a quarterly subsidy to Granbury Hood County Economic Development Corporation of $25,000, and to Hood County Committee on Aging, $18,750. A quarterly service fee to Hood County Appraisal District, $142,640.25. And a quarterly subsidy to Hood County Child Protective Services, $2,500. And then the second scheduled payment on the progress on construction of the Animal Control Building to Modern Contractors, Inc., $398,050. There's a budgeted transfer into the Jury Fund 74, just to provide needed cash, $17,800. And there's a budgeted transfer into Fund 103 for solid waste, just to provide needed cash, $12,300. A payment to Tyler Technologies for their progress on the ENCODE system conversion, To U.S. National, U.S. Bank National Association, these are the fuel card payments for fuel card purchases, $45,100.46. And to Vulcan Materials Company, $30,269.86 for road construction materials. I have provided a payment warrant for everything on the list. I provided you with a detailed list by vendor and by account number. We would ask your approval to pay these bills.
Motion to ratify paying the bills.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry to have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion on payment of the bills? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the presentation of a budget date calendar.
Judge and Commissioners, you've received a potential draft of, the judges suggested budget dates and the department hearing schedules. Commissioner Berry suggested that we might need an alternative to the dates, and so the top one, A, would coincide with the email and what was in your packet from the judge's office for the calendar, which would call for meeting on September 9th to adopt a budget and adopt a tax rate. And then by July 25th, having the chief appraiser certify the tax roll for us, and then all the other activities in between. We have some restrictions trying to meet the publication deadlines. I sent you an email earlier describing the processes. One is, and the primary way of considering this is under Tax Code Chapter 26, and that calls for two public hearings and many public notices of various types. And that would, that would keep your options open and allow you to consider virtually any tax rate. If you wanted to stick primarily or essentially with the exact effective tax rate, it's possible that you could adopt a budget and a tax rate under Local Government Code Chapter 111. But once you start down that path, if you don't have all the hearings and all the notices, then you cannot consider a higher tax rate should you decide to. So usually in the interest of keeping options open, and particularly since we don't know what the tax roll is at the moment, I usually recommend that you rely on Tax Code Chapter But if, these are two options for the calendar for your consideration. I didn't know if you had any other considerations, if you wanted to have a third option.
The difference is on A and B, on A there was one day in early August that I have a scheduling conflict, and I just asked him to put B. So it matters, it matters very little. The July 14th and July 15th, it's attached to this email of the two days that you and the judge have set aside for budget hearings, is that correct, Stan?
Yes, sir.
So Monday will be all day from 8:00 AM to 5:00, and then Tuesday will be 9:00 to 4:30, and that's the two days we'll have for budget hearings that's not affected by the calendar.
Correct. That meeting that you mentioned is basically for the purpose of telling me what you want me to publish as far as the tax rate that you intend to consider. That becomes important because if you want to consider a tax rate above the effective rate, you have to publish your intention to consider a higher tax rate.
We have no clue what that is right now until we receive the word from the appraisal district.
Not at this moment. No, sir.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve either A or B.
Make a motion to approve B.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry and seconded by Commissioner Roan to adopt the calendar B. Is any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carried. Thank you very much, Stan.
Judge.
Ms. Lainey. Consider and take appropriate action on Hood County ordinance on tow trucks and wreckers for non-consent toes.
Judge, Commissioners, I've come before you this morning to ask that you consider and approve finally Hood County wrecker ordinance for non-consent toes. Over many, many years, and I don't even know when it all got started, I guess when vehicles started getting abandoned on roadways and people started getting arrested from their vehicles here in Hood County, that's when it all started. And I'm not sure when the policy that we've been under or working with, it's been the city's ordinance for many, many years, it's got us by, but there's always been issues with that. When we've got toes that are way out in the county and as the county grows, we've had lots and lots of stuff going on out in the county. So there's mileage issues and a lot of different things, and it's really up to the city to approve who's on the, who can be towing vehicles through that. So we've always felt that we needed something that the county has, ordinance or a policy that we could work with easier and enforce things easier. So Lieutenant McDonald and I talked, he did a great job of putting it together. We turned it over to the county attorney to ask for her help in this, and she did a fantastic job of getting, getting this finished up and put together and helped us with a lot of the laws and a lot of the wording. So I think we have a great ordinance for non-consent wrecker toes. I guess, unless you've got any specific questions.
So in layman's terms, Sheriff, would you explain it so everyone understands what it is in layman's terms?
Well, this sets forward like the cost of what a, what it would cost for a non-consent tow with mileage or the basic fees. Where's that page?
Basically, non-consent tow is when we do an arrest, is the general. We're not trying to overcharge people on a fixing arrest, so give us guidelines and how to work it off. Be on the same page.
This sets the guidelines. The standard flat fee is $130, which that's the same as the city's ordinance that we're working under now. But some of the variance is with the mileage. There's a lot more miles in the county than just what's in the city limits of the city of Granbury. Then there's special considerations, too, for bigger vehicles and how they go about getting them. So we want to make sure all of that's incorporated into this and make sure we have the best people that are doing those toes for us, to protect me as a sheriff, to protect you as Commissioners' Court, and to protect the citizen out there, the person that owns that vehicle. So we'd like to move forward on this and get it in place.
Anybody have any questions for Sheriff or Lynn McDonald?
It's a set fee for rotation wrecker, so to speak.
Yes, it's a set fee.
Can that rotation list change as a wrecking company drops off the list or a new one comes aboard?
Yes. And we've got another form, I guess it really doesn't need to be voted on, but it's, it was given to each of you, and that's the certificate, certificate, I'm having problems talking just like Whipper Well Bay, I can say that one, the certificate of registration. So this will be the form that we'll fill out for each of the companies to make sure we have all their information on here about the drivers and the vehicles, and so...
And who will control the rotation dispatch?
Dispatch knows the rotation, yeah. We, we'll set that, and we'll still work with the city on everything, too, but then dispatch knows whether it's a city officer, a trooper, or a deputy, or a constable, or whatever law enforcement calls for a non-consent rotation tow, then it'll go through dispatch. So they have the list, so it stays on a rotating basis.
And the consent toes are rotated the same way?
The consent toes?
No.
No, consent, if somebody calls in, they...
The owner.
The owner says, like, they just got in a wreck out on 377, and they like to use one over another, then they can say, "I want to use this record to tow my vehicle." If they're unconscious and got problems and they say, "I don't care," then the officers just call in for the next rotation. So, yes.
And the rest of them are just abandoned and...
Yes. And abandoned ones, I guess I said that up front, but that's, the abandoned ones get brought in, they bill us, and then we pay for that, and then if they come back looking for their vehicles, then they'll have to pay for that, or eventually some of them then go to, go to the sale, so.
Ms. Casper has approved this, correct?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Roan. Any further discussion on this item? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I guess we can use the copy that you have to get the signatures on. Each one of you have a copy, we can use yours as the first original, I guess.
Mary, do you have a...
I handed her an extra one.
Yeah, I have a clean copy? Okay, yeah, we'll sign that one after the, after the meeting. Thank you. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the 4th of July celebration on the square. Sandra's not here, I guess that, her replacement?
Yes, sir, you're stuck with me. Judge, Commissioners, if I could, just to aside to Mr. Lenny, if he was in a Navy Fighter Squadron, his call sign would forever be Whipper Well.
Whipper.
Don, but if it sticks, wear it, and if it doesn't, if you don't like it, I guarantee you you'll be called that, but anyway. Judge, I appreciate your opportunity to be here this morning. Sandra was in another meeting, I know you'd probably rather have her here. We're excited about a great 4th of July coming up and the calendar finally played ball with us, and since the 4th falls on Friday this year, we're going to be able to have the, we're going to be able to have the parade and the fireworks and everything on Friday. So we've had our 4th of July meetings, the sheriff's office and the city and county were all represented. We had a great meeting recently to discuss this, and we have the final law enforcement meeting on Wednesday, June 25th at 3:30 in City Hall, pre-council chambers. We've got a great event, as you can see, I think you have the card, you have the schedule up there, I believe, in your packet. We start out with the D&amp;D Rockin' Rods Car Show on Thursday afternoon, Thursday evening, and Mike Brown Hyundai, and then, of course, that evening, 1776 will also be playing in the, in the Opera House. The Friday, well, and Thursday evening, of course, the big event for me is, once the parking lot closes, we do vendor check-in, and that will go from 5:00 till probably midnight or so, and then at 5:00 the next morning, we're lining up the parade. So parade lineup will be, of course, Friday morning at the Granbury High School parking lot, and Judge, we hope that you'll be in that parade. I believe we've already received word that you will be, so that's great. We have tons of volunteers coming in. Friday, as I said, will be a big day. We've got a lot of, a lot of parade apps signed up. I think we'll fill the, we'll fill the square up with vendors, and that's going to be around 110 vendor booths on the square, larger than what you normally see out there. We generally have either none or very, very few empty spaces. We've done some things differently this year. We're going to have more kids stuff free, free or minor payment for. There'll be a rock climbing wall. HEB is doing a tent with face painting and all that stuff. So there will be music at Granbury Square Plaza in the various times that we don't interfere with what's going on at Granbury Live. We don't want to compete with them, so, but there will be free, over in the Granbury Square Plaza tabernacle area there, there will be free music from local musicians throughout most of the days. Let's see, the great fireworks show, the Extreme Pyrotechnics fireworks show, of course, will be over the lake, it will be behind Kroger's at the new site there where the Longhorns are. We did that last year and snuck up on a few folks, I think this year they'll be ready for it. Both the Sheriff's Department and Police Department are working with us on closing off that road and doing all that, so. Should be a great event. Fireworks will start about dusk, about 9:40, and will go for about 30 minutes. Following that, the Drive-In Theater is doing a big double feature out there, I think, starting at 11:00. And I neglected to mention, of course, the Ranch Rodeo, which is always a big draw and one of the best places in town to watch the fireworks display, so. Beyond that, I won't go into any greater detail, but I'd be happy, happy to answer any questions for you, and before Commissioner Berry starts busting my chops about t-shirts, we just wanted to be sure we have the correct sizes for you, so the t-shirts will be forthcoming, so.
Showed up with Adam, I asked you about him, sir.
Gentlemen, be happy to answer any questions. We appreciate your support of this event. This event brings, depending on the numbers, we think we probably bring, including the fireworks show, close to 100,000 people into the county over a three-day weekend, and we have a direct tourism impact somewhere between $3 and $5 million. So it's a big event, continues to be. It's a lot of fun, it's a lot of work, but, but we'd like doing it. So be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Anybody have any questions for Mike? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve this plan that Mike has, has worked out for the 4th of July celebration.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Roan. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carried. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Purchasing. Approved blanket purchase agreement with NAPA Auto for road operations equipment filters.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Every couple of years, we put this out as a convenience for road operations so that they can standardize their filters and be able to just go get them when they need it right there, know it... right there, no other quotes and stuff. It also gives local businesses the opportunity to do business with the county. We only had two respondents this year, and you should have in your packet the pricing. It was clear that NAPA had the best pricing. They will hold their prices for a year, and after a year, with mutual consent with us, we'll renew it for another year. I just think that it be approved and that you are aware of it.
I was really surprised, the difference in the bids on the filters.
Big difference.
Yeah, there was.
All right, anybody have any questions for Nelda?
I'll buy mine too.
Now entertain a motion to approve this blanket purchase order agreement with NAPA Auto for Road Operations Equipment Filters.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Roan, seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Considering take appropriate action to reward a vendor contract for RFP 2014-004 CCS Bulk Waste Services.
Our current contract is up this year, and we're rebidding this in order to get a vendor in place. We issued this RFP. It was opened in my offices on May 29th. There were three respondents. We had a new one by the name of Republic. Wanco was another new one, and Progressive Waste. The only way that we could do an apples-apples comparison was to take a number and assign it a, it's the number of hauls, and calculate each company and what they offered. And with that, Progressive came in about $1,000 less than the other two. There wasn't a big difference. Actually, Wanco was fairly high, but Republic was right there, not too far out of the ballpark. So in conjunction with James McOsland, his recommendation is to continue on with Progressive since they were the actual low bid, low bidder.
All right, entertain a motion to approve Progressive for the Bulk Waste Services for the county.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Tout, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barry.
It's a one-year contract?
Yeah, with renewal.
We have the option for?
Two years after that.
Or additional one-year renewals.
All right, any, any other questions? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Consider, thank you, Nelda. Considering take appropriate action to gather information to discuss advantages and disadvantages regarding the possibility of leasing vehicles for the use of county businesses versus, versus We have several people that would like to discuss this, and these are the Wichita Falls folks that have come today to talk to us about leasing.
Morning, Judge. Commissioners, we appreciate the opportunity to be here. Just to give you a little bit of insight on American National Leasing, we're part of American National Bank. We're about a $400 million bank in Wichita Falls. We're an independent bank, and we're a very conservative bank. But we've had, we, we are a full-service bank where we have mortgage, trust, and investments, and also the leasing department. We've had the leasing department for a little over 15 years, and we've sort of grown in an area of municipal leasing. We probably have in the neighborhood of 30 governmental entities leasing either equipment or vehicles from us at this point. And it's, it's growing at a pretty fast pace. But we, I guess, introduced ourselves at the East Texas Judge and Commissioner Conference and got the conversation started. And since then, it, it's just now started over the last couple of days. So we just put together a quick snapshot of sort of what the cost of a Chevrolet Tahoe PPV is based on the buy board, which is the state buy board contract. Caldwell Country Chevrolet is the dealer that we got the bids from, and it's a two-wheel and a four-wheel drive on a 2015. I understand there's still 2014s in the, in the market, but as things go, there's cutoffs, and so I just proposed a 2015 since, you know, as time rolls on, that'll sort of be the number we use. But if it moves quicker, then the 2014 pricing could be in place. Again, these are all just ballparks of, of different quotes we've done. The Cat Fleet Group is part of the Caldwell Country Group. They are a big outfit that specializes in outfits. This particular outfit, we've seen outfits run from a couple thousand dollars all the way up to close to $20,000. But this is one we chose to use just to ballpark what the majority or the average has been in our experience. Usually there's some graphics or striping that goes along with it. We do charge a $100 documentation fee. And the down payment, there could be a down payment, or there couldn't be a down payment. We don't really care based on the program. If y'all have trade-ins or down money, then obviously that would impact the total cost of the, of the total lease program. And then just extended that over a three-year payment plan, which we've found that most of the cars range from 80,000 miles to 120,000 miles or more. And that's sort of what we've based our residual on from auction information, from residual guides, from people in the industry. On the two-wheel drive, we currently have an $8,500 residual, and on the four-wheel drive is 9,500. And the way that works in this particular calculation is that anything over that $8,500 or $9,500 goes back into the county on the, on the, at the end of the deal. So there's no money that, that gets moved anywhere else. Y'all can cash it out, put in another budget item, or y'all can roll it into the next deal, which what we've found in the groups that we have flipped out of three years, you know, that's even lowered the payment going into the next three-year or four-year cycle. But the majority of the deals we've done has been on a three-year with, with a target of anywhere from 100 to 120, 30,000 miles. The other two columns out there to the right that show a dollar out is the true lease purchase as well. There's no residual at the end, it's just a straight finance option down to a dollar. I might add that both of these concepts are lease purchase concepts. The 8,500 at the end, for example, if the county wants to purchase that vehicle for $8,500 at the end of the three-year term, they can. No fees are added to that. There's obviously no pre-term penalty or anything that most people associate with leasing. It's with the governmental entity, it's all straight-up calculations, so. You have anything? Billy?
The big thing is you're getting that three-year lease so that you're always staying the warranty. You're always going to keep your maintenance costs low. That's, that's a good advantage also of not owning these cars and just keep running and running and running. Your maintenance costs are going to go down, which also goes into you're saving that money and it can be put back into the purchase of the vehicle. So it's always going to be a benefit to you. And the number one thing that I think, you know, coming from a family in law enforcement, and primarily we're doing these for the sheriff's vehicles, is always making sure they have the best equipment available to do their job. Are there any questions?
I got a question for Lynn. What's the average miles per year on the Tahoes? Average?
With a two-man unit, it averages 36,000 miles.
Per year?
Per year, so at three years, that'd be 108,000 miles on that vehicle.
So that's in their?
Yes, sir.
In their perimeter.
When we put our units up for auction, how much do we get for them?
The, what I've started watching, Renee Bates, who we sell all of our patrol vehicles this last year at, right at 100,000 miles, Tahoe bringing 10 to $12,000 back.
And that's where it goes back to what we were saying earlier, is the excess above the 8,500 or 9,500 that we're using, you can roll that into your next purchase, which will again lower your payment. There is a little bit, like as you go into your next purchase, if you go up to the next, like from a 2014 to a 2015, it raises the price up on the vehicle naturally, $1,000, $1,500. So as you move forward, that extra that you have is going to take away that part as well as lowers that payment down.
Well, the other thing to consider is that maintenance during the three years too.
Our maintenance on our Tahoes and units that we're down on right now has basically been it lasts and breaks.
Tires.
Tires.
And tires. Yes, the tire for our Tahoe is, is running us $109 tire on our, our buy, our buy board, I mean.
We haven't sold a Tahoe though. We've rolled a Tahoe, we haven't sold a Tahoe yet.
No, we have not sold a Tahoe yet. We've got four still. I think this is our second year on the Tahoes.
How many vehicles do we have in our fleet right now? Just Sheriff's Department?
For all the vehicles, I think 53.
53.
I have 17 that are patrol vehicles that patrol, and that's what, what I was understanding was working off of. Is that the ones that are two-man units that do?
17.
17.
That's two-man units that operate at about?
Yes, that's the ones that are marked and they're out every day.
That's the 36,000 mile a year.
Our 53 number, that takes in all the administration investigations.
And transport.
Transport. Jail runs six vehicles.
Yeah.
That takes all that, and then animal control is four vehicles.
And I might add that with that said, that's a good point, that we've done that in other areas, the transport vehicles, the animal control vehicles, pickups, the four-wheel drive or two-wheel drive pickups, crew cabs. It's been a wide range that everybody's needs out there that we've accommodated them with, so we, we do whatever y'all want to do and whatever's best for the county.
I have a question. You know, you said that the municipality's done business with that now?
Yes. But the problem of that group, majority have been counties, and there has to have been cities, or in some hospital districts.
Do you have a couple of counties that want to?
You bet.
You know, I'm going to suggest we go to a workshop with this where we can sit down and get the auditor and purchase, and all of us together to look at numbers and see if it is a good deal for us or not.
Yeah, I think we need to investigate it further too because from the taxpayer's standpoint, we are eliminating the taxpayer paying for depreciation, basically. And so I think it can be a savings over time. It may not look that way the first time, the first three-year period, but over time, I think it can definitely.
You don't have cards that you can pass out to, to Nelda and stand so that if they have any questions, so when they come to the workshop, they'll be prepared and, and have all their questions answered, give those county names to, to purchasing, so.
I have a question though, Judge. When you're buying, this is a lease purchase. I mean, I guess I'm a little confused because we're still paying for this vehicle in three years. We have buying power. I mean, we, our borrowing power is not our problem. Our problem is being able to turn a vehicle over in 24 months or 36, but that's not the mentality that we have in the Sheriff's Department or any other department. We take this vehicle and turn it over and put it in ancillary spots, and we don't just give it back. I mean, so even a Tahoe, when it's ready to sell in three years, we would give it to an investigator, or we'd give it to something else and move it on Crown Vic.
We just have to buy it at the residual.
I understand that. So you're still paying the same price that we pay when we go out and we borrow half a million dollars and buy 15 at one time? So where's the benefit?
The benefit is instead, if we had to go out and buy four or five vehicles at one time, you wouldn't have all that upfront cost of, of that, what, 36,000 times four. You, you'll have 10,000 times four. So I mean, overall, it just, it eliminates your?
Well, it, it has an impact on county cash flow.
Yeah.
What about insurance?
What's a lease due to our M and O versus a purchase?
What about the insurance aspect?
Stan, you, I know we're going to workshop, but you handed out a deal about lease transitions versus, that's, that's always in the past, we've not even, we had an opportunity to lease the, the grinder, you know, the half a million dollar chip, chipper, but we went ahead and bought it because I thought that was what the auditors, was made it cleaner.
Judge, Commissioners, I, I risk telling everybody about a lot of things that no one but an accountant would care about. There, there are a couple of issues. One of them is whether you can properly saddle a future court with ongoing debt. There's a couple of ways to handle that. One is inside the contract to have an annual renewal or a lapse so that on paper, you know, there's, there's no real continuing obligation, and that the county's only commitment is to renew that funding in the new budget. That tends to be problematic, even though it, it looks like it, it kind of fits all the pattern together, because when you, when you get into it and you actually have to walk away from a commitment like that, it adds a lot of turmoil and confusion and, and bad press, really. The other way to do that is the county has the option on a lease purchase to actually submit these things to the Attorney General and have the Attorney General approve the continuing obligation debt. But a larger problem that Commissioner Barry just mentioned was it due to your maintenance and operations budget. Typically, if you have a lease purchase under general accepted accounting principles, that's going to be treated for accounting purposes just exactly like borrowing money and purchasing it. Where the rub comes in is how do you get money out of the debt service fund to pay for the lease payments? The way I've seen most of these leases structured, the money has to come out of the general fund, which comes out of the maintenance and operations budget. You're already strapped as far as your cap on your M and O tax rate. There is no cap on your debt service tax rate. And I think that's why, even though it's, it's an accounting issue that maybe no one would care about, that's probably why you should care about it as you look towards the future. In the Texas County's Public Finance Handbook, they urge people to properly structure these. And one way that they say it can work is through a Public Property Finance Act type of bond. This is something Hood County has done in the past. Particularly, we just paid off a public property finance bond that was for the purchase of fire trucks. So I think there's ways to solve this and, and fit it all together. I do welcome the opportunity to come to a workshop and, and try to look at all the financial issues. Certainly, when you look at a three or $4 million bond issue, as the judge mentioned, you're clearly going to have 50,000 or so in issuance costs. Perhaps those could be avoided. But as I look back on, on this particular debt issue, it looks very much like the tax notes that the county issues. These gentlemen may have already solved these kinds of problems. I would, I would be very happy to hear how people have addressed those issues in the past.
One question I have about, I mean, the way we finance them now through a bond, it's a 10-year bond, and we don't keep the vehicles 10 years. So it's kind of like we're paying?
The amortization schedule on those bonds tends to be from four years to seven years on a tax note. Now, that's somewhat different with the YMCA financing because it is improvement to real property. property, and we anticipate that's going to be kept for a very long time. But typically, if all we're buying is equipment, we've been very aggressive on the repayment schedule, and those amortization schedules have been as short as four years and as long as seven.
Having said all that, the upfront cost can still be considerably less is what we're considering too.
That would appear to be a major part of the savings Commissioner.
I'm not against it, I just want to make sure it doesn't affect the M and O because we don't have any wiggle room.
No, we don't, you're right.
I'd like to add, and those are all about points by the auditor, we've had our counsel out of Waco that specializes in municipal governmental financing advise us, work with us on our contract verbiage, and they do, they also consult and advise our trust department on municipal bonds and others type finance options. But in what he's given us, the non-appropriation clause is in our language verbiage, it can be non-appropriated, and while we don't anticipate that happening, I mean, I guess it could, but we don't do a lot of things outside of our comfort zone, vehicles, you know, heavy equipment, office equipment, that kind of thing. The ripper you mentioned, I mean, we haven't done one of those, we'd like to because it's a big ticket item, fire trucks, another big ticket item that, you know, that really everybody needs in the governmental business, so the possibility of the non-appropriation happening, I guess is a possibility, and that's in our verbiage, but again, it's something that we sort of lean into quite honestly, look at, you know, what if there's trade-ins or any down payment money that would put us, but also with that said, when you buy off the state buy board, you're buying it at anywhere from, you know, 10 to 20%, 30% less than what the retail market is, so it still is a lower risk opportunity on our side, which again is in our comfort zone. But again, it's all been reviewed, some of the bigger counties, I mean, it's, they have consulted with him on various conversations, and it's all, everybody's gotten comfortable with it on our end, so that, you're welcome, we'll give you his name and number and have...
Now, before you leave, I'd like for you to let the purchasing agent know what counties do this so we can follow up there with the workshop.
We'd be glad to.
Can I have one more question, so that I can make sure I'm not mistaken, I didn't see what you gave me, but you mentioned buy board, so you operate under buy board or through buy board contract?
No, it's really the governmental entity, y'all would be the ones signing up with the, or buying it from the buy board, y'all are going to be the owners of the vehicle and equipment.
But if we can, if we go to buy board, that makes, satisfies bidding costs.
That's correct.
And that's what I was trying to say.
Yes.
So we could, if we decided, consider them as a sole source?
Well, you're probably the only one.
Well, again, you know, we look at buy board, y'all are, remember, buy board, we work in conjunction with that effort to assist in the whole execution of the plan.
Generally, do you think that we worry through buy board or purchase, they've already done bidding, and so it satisfies the government requirements?
So anyone they recognize qualifies?
But this would eliminate that upfront acquisition cost for the bond, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we...
Well, for this amount.
But if you structure it through a property, personal property finance, you're going to have a similar structure as a bond, you're going to have bond council fees, you're going to have bond issuance costs. I suppose the question would be, can you have this arrangement approved by the Attorney General so that it becomes lawful debt in such a way that we could justify paying for this by levying a tax through the debt service fund? The question is, how do you get the money coming from the debt service fund?
Back into this, yeah.
I'm sure that there may be a mechanism to do that already, I mean, other counties have done it.
I'm sure it won't be the first time the Attorney General's been asked about it.
I'm all ears.
But I'll be glad to give you our counsel there that specializes in that, he'll probably be able to give you a little more fact-based information.
Bob, you had a...
I wanted to make sure I heard what you said, do we buy the vehicles? Are we on the vehicles or what?
That's right. You'll set the deal up, we'll pay Caldwell Country the money, and then we'll put that money into a lease purchase arrangement between us and the municipal.
We on the vehicles?
We do.
Yeah, that's what qualifies for the tax.
We want to take that acquisition cost of the bond.
That's the only thing I see we're saying.
If we still get a bond.
What I'd like to do is advertise that over 10 or 12 years.
On a leased versus owned vehicle, if it's owned through a lease agreement, they, number one, they know you paid less, they're going to set some residual values at least, and number two, the disposition of the vehicle, should it be totaled, is easier.
It could also.
Yeah, it could.
And that's a good point. I know on a residential or retail deal, that's very much a consideration. On a governmental deal, I'm not, we haven't had that topic discussed, I mean, it all goes through, I believe, TML or whoever the insurance agency is that they're signed up with, and we're just put down as lien holder and the governmental entity as the owner.
Right. So it'd be the same as you do GMAC or something?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, thank you, I think, what, does anybody else have any questions?
I guess we just need to set up a workshop.
Yeah, we'll pick a time that's agreeable to everybody and have a workshop on this, so thank y'all very much for coming.
Thanks guys.
Thank you guys. All right, discuss and take appropriate action on irrigation system improvement project for maintenance.
Morning.
Morning.
Excuse me, for those of you that wasn't here Friday, we discussed hooking our water well into our irrigation system over at the new emergency operations center, and a budget of $2,500 was approved for that project. $2,041 of that has been spent, but during the course of getting more information on how much water was used in each cycle, we needed to upgrade the size of the storage tank that we were going to use, and the bigger one won't fit inside the wellhouse, so we need a cement slab out there to set it on, so I'm asking that you approve an additional $1,500 for use on that project.
Tim, just to clarify though, you're actually going to, the reason we're doing this as well, that we talked about in the ELC, Animal Control ELC meeting, by doing this, you're going to look at further doing sprinklers at maybe the Justice Center in our building as well to take...
Yes, sir.
To take it off of, you don't have a landscape issue with...
Going to try to get this entire block off of city water and onto our well as far as irrigation goes.
What is the fund 010-510-352?
It's my maintenance fund.
Just maintenance, okay.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve spending an additional $1,500 for the slab, for the tank to support this system for the irrigation. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Roan, any further discussion?
Tim, is that a firm price?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we already got sprinklers hooked up, but your concern is we can't, we don't want to run it over and over and run our well out.
We don't want our deep well pump running all the time.
Okay, is it any further discussion?
Is that included, the tank?
Yes, this is what this is for, the tank.
Upgrading the tank, we're going to go to a 15...
What about the slab?
Tank and slab, yeah. $1,500 is for the slab.
That's what I thought.
We've already got the tank.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion?
No.
Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thank you Tim. Consider and take appropriate action regarding Hood County Rider Eight performing, transfer this from the county to the city, and I believe we have all kinds of folks, Warren, I think you wanted to come and talk, I see Michelle is here, and we have the mayor of the city of Granbury, if y'all will step forward. Basically, what this is for the public, this, the county went after and got a grant from the, from TCEQ for clean air, and, you know, clean air, Michelle and I went down and we, you know, we talked to them, and they said, oh, this is great, this is great, this is great, and then when we got ready to do it with purchasing and everybody else said, whoa, wait a minute, this is not, this doesn't conform with the local government code, and we just found out that we couldn't do a lot of things as a county, so the city, I said, we talked to the city and the city said, oh yeah, we'd be great, this would be great, so they wanted to take it over, so based on that, what do you guys have to say?
Basically, what Judge Cochrane just said, we just run into too many hindrances with the state laws as far as trying to get the program going with the air quality planning, and we all know that it's very important for Hood County to stay in attainment for ozone, so that's what we're trying to do, is this gives us funds to do the work to get this started, and we'll be able to get some technical work done that will identify what our problems are so that we can apply control measures for that, and like I said, the funds will come straight from state-issued funds from TCEQ, so we're asking for this to go through with the transfer.
Anybody have any questions for Michelle or, I see Warren has said that he's for this transfer, and Mayor, do you have any thing to add to this?
Oh Judge, I'm just here to sign the paperwork.
Very good.
I've got one question, that check we received from TCEQ, are we good with that or is that done?
It will be turned back down in a second.
Okay.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve this transfer from the Hood County, this grant to the city of Granbury.
Are we, before we do that, are we going to have or do we have something in writing that explains what we're going to get for that transfer and what's going to happen? I mean...
The letter that the judge has today spells out that the transfer will occur, that the Rider Eight Performing Party will transfer from Hood County to the city of Granbury. TCEQ is working on an amendment to the contract right now, when that comes in, that will be signed by all three parties as well, it'll be signed by TCEQ, the city, and the county.
So we don't have the blessings of it being transferred over yet from TCEQ?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
So we're going to work on the legal document that'll be signed by...
Yeah, they said it's okay with them, we were afraid it wouldn't be, but I'm, you know, when you're dealing with Austin, it's about like dealing with Washington, but, you know, but they were, they were, oh yeah, that'd be fine, we went, oh my God, it's great.
Actually, we're used to working with cities in the Rider Eight program, most of the other areas.
We need to do this before we get a legal opinion from TCEQ or...
I think we have it.
This actually is your request to TCEQ, sign this letter.
Okay, I got you, okay.
And they'll do the amendment that'll be signed by everyone.
All right, does anybody else have any questions for...
So we're sending the check back to TCEQ and they're going to reissue it to the city of Granbury, is that correct?
Yes.
Hundred and, what, 145,000?
Two hundred and forty-five thousand.
Two forty-five.
And then there's additional money that'll come later.
I've said this about five times in meetings, but the city can do everything that the state, in other words, what, it's kind of hard to explain, the county can only do things that the state will let them do, and the city can do everything that else that the state says, well, unless they say you can't do it, so they can do a lot more than the county can. We're a subdivision of the state of Texas where they're not, basically.
And Judge and Commissioners, I'm here as Warren Ketteman representing the Lake Granbury area EDC, and Michelle offices in our building, she shares space in there, and I just want to say she's been very helpful on several projects we've already had that requested air quality information, it's nice to have her right in the building, and that will continue as is.
May I understand this Judge, is taxpayers of Hood County will get more benefits if the city takes it?
That's right.
Exactly right, yeah, because the question becomes initially, as Michelle mentioned briefly in the beginning, attainment versus non-attainment, that applies to the county, to Hood County, so that can, if that status changes, it can cost the taxpayers a lot of money.
All right, anybody else have any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve this transfer.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Roan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tout, any further discussion, then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thank y'all very much. All right, consider and take appropriate action to charter communication proposal of new animal control facility, Jackie?
Judging Commissioners, one of the previous animal control facility meetings, we began discussing trying to make sure that whenever we're ready to move into the new facility that we have all of our communications up and online and together and functional. I met with Charter and AT&amp;T, had them prepare some proposals for us from Charter Business Communications who we use a lot for our fiber connectivity to these buildings, I had them give us a couple of options. One was just the lowest end, which is the 100 megabit per second transport, and you can see that that is a thousand dollars installation, and for term of 60 months is $1,100 per month for that data communication circuit. Primarily, we've been using a lot of the 1 gigabit service. We can use the 100 megabyte service, but I think that if we're going to add a couple of cameras out at this site and we want to transport that video traffic back to this location, this would probably be the best move for us to have a 1 gigabit transfer rate so that we can go ahead and transfer that video traffic back to the EOC from animal control and just house that video there. Also, we will transport all of the telecommunications traffic across those links as well as the animal control facility control software that they use to, on their day-to-day basis that's there. The difference in the cost from a 100 megabyte link to a 1 gigabit link is about $280 difference on there.
It's 180, isn't it Jackie?
It may be 180, I'm sorry, let me flip back to the other page, it is $180 difference per month for that term, and, but the installation stays the same, it's a $1,000 installation. Basically, they do that because they build in a return on investment with the county.
Don't they have, do they have this service out at the current animal control?
Yes, we have it there and we've been using that for road ops, and we've brought online all of the phones that are there now for road operations, and then in the future, as the county grows, if we need to add video surveillance to any of these sites, and that's just kind of something that we see from time to time that we need to add, we have the ability to put that video surveillance in place and be able to monitor that from a remote location.
From one remote location?
One, one location.
All right, what's the, what do you, what's, you're recommending 1 gigabyte?
I recommend the 1 gigabyte because that keeps us in inconsistent, or inconsistency with all of our other sites that we're using to transport that amount of data, we're hosting all of the servers here at our central location, and so that keeps them up and running at a nice solid speed for all of our voice communications and everything.
Plus, we don't do this now, the first time we have any kind of event like another storm, we're going to have the request to do this anyway, so.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 1 gigabyte charter business communication proposal for the new animal control facility.
So moved.
Can we incorporate that motion to include the second portion of this, which is having you sign the contract?
Yeah, let's do that, authorize the county judge to... Yeah, let's do that, and authorize the county judge to do that. I have a motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do you want to add that on there, Commissioner?
Yeah, then I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Roan to approve both A and B. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the motion carried.
That just should keep us on track from a construction standpoint to be done and time for us to be complete with the building.
All right, thank you, Jackie.
Thank you, sir.
It's 10:10, and we're adjourned.